In the interest of time, I am representing the Save Highlands Group, who are in support of vacation rentals. I will actually be very brief tonight. As we all know, the town voted to restrict vacation rentals, and the Save Highlands Group has challenged that action in court. We've already discussed the benefits provided to our community by the owners who graciously share their homes with our Highlands visitors. Likewise, others have voiced their opposition to vacation rentals. Our hope is that now we can move past the negativity and come together to discuss and design a solution that addresses the concerns of all sides of this matter. The message here is very simple. Local residents and second homeowners need to work together in a collaborative effort with the town to develop solutions that don't disadvantage any member of this community. Together, we can provide sustainable solutions while welcoming the visitors our economy depends on. It is clear by the passion around this topic that we all have strong love for this community, and we all have a part to play in maintaining Highlands as the very special place that it is. Tonight, we are asking this board to reverse its previous vote and show the strong leadership required to unify this town once more. Thank you for hearing our voices on this matter.
Thank you, Jennifer. Do we have any other public comments tonight? I think we do. We had a list. Do we have any more comments?
We have John Richardson.
Okay.
Hey. I'm John Richardson. I have a home on Lynn Lane in Highlands. Little background, we've got a little over six years' history in Highlands. I'm trying to get into your three-minute thing. Our residency in Highlands has ranged from visiting family friends as teenagers, staying at the pop-up camper at Van Hook Glade Campground, use local lodging, and yes, a lot of winter time over Christmas and New Year's and holiday seasons. We've owned a second home in Highlands for almost 10 years now. We have seen Highlands change from a quaint town where the restaurants would close and shut, close down right after New Year's, and it's gone into a year-long community. Why am I here? I currently serve on the board of a local property owners association, as well as one in Chattanooga, where my other home is located. Somehow, I don't, can't say no. Anyway, given that, I look at things different than the other typical owner may not see, or I may see them differently. Tonight, I do come as an individual. I'm not coming as representing the property owners association. I'm speaking for myself, period. As a homeowner, I have a concern of what's happening. I see the discussion and the confrontation relative to the short-term rentals. I'm concerned about changes I see happening to and around our neighborhoods. I look at a bigger picture, though, and I feel like Highlands' problem may be more than just the short-term rentals. So I'm going to expand it just a little bit. Unless something changes, I understand the town will be becoming enforcing the restrictions on the R1 zoning in January. My position is similar to some that I've heard said before. If the zoning doesn't allow it, I'm full agreement with the town enforcing its ordinances and that it has on the books. What does enforcement mean? During the short time I've actually lived here, I've seen several instances of what I consider unequal or non-enforcement. Tonight, as with the R1 zoning ruling, I want to encourage the town to be consistent in its enforcement processes across all ordinances. I see different areas where I feel enforcement by the town is not consistent. These are primarily examples for discussion or comparison, but if action is warranted, that would be up to the town. Starting with the trash. How's the town fully enforcing the new garbage ordinance? You do get feedback from town employees who are collecting the garbage, but it also seems that you seem to be dependent upon property owners to report their neighbors. While that may work, my concern is that this is not the best option, pitting neighbors against neighbors. Bear resistant container issue is pretty much settled. The ordinance also states something else. It says all receptacles shall be removed from their positions adjacent to the street or sidewalk after the contents have been emptied on the same day. It makes for an ugly town or neighborhood when trash cans were left lying alongside the street for days on end. I do believe that beautification was also in the intent for this part of the ordinance, in addition to not restricting traffic. My comments may warrant some additional legal interpretation. I asked for clarification because I did get a question back from the town enforcement officer. And yes, she's doing a good job. She's been very helpful and has actually taken action on this according to the minutes of last month's meeting. My question, does the term "adjacent to the street and sidewalk" mentioned in the ordinance need a deeper definition? Does it incorporate the full designated right-of-way? Again, what was the intent of the requirement? My reason for the question is the comment I got back. If an owner pulls a container away from the edge of the roadway, they are still compliant even though that you can see the can as you pass by. That's my question there. Does the rule apply to public streets or both public and private streets? That came up. This is a unique Highland issue here. I'll talk on it later. I interpret it to apply to both. As a property owner on a private street, like the one on the public street, is a legal, has a legal agreement with the town of Highlands for garbage collection. But if it only applies to public streets or residential owners who live on private streets, still required to take or pay household garbage service from the town. Second, the town removed the community dumpster, which was located near the pool. As I understand, the town did not want to have to enforce illegal dumping from outsiders. Uh-oh, I'm looking back at the enforcement thing. The dumpster was definitely a valuable plus for many Highlands residents. A good example is where a part-time owner leaving on Sunday or Monday could easily conform to all the household garbage rules, but would not be here to remove their containers from the street after a Tuesday pickup, like I just mentioned earlier. The town convenience dumpster provided them a viable solution. Removal of the dumpster has made it very inconvenient as the Madison County sites are much more remote. I personally would like to see this dumpster back. I mentioned the roads, public and private roads earlier. Our main subdivision road is a mess. The main road incorporates a mixture of both public and private designated roads. The lower portion of the road is designated as public, while the upper section of the road is designated as private. The town was asked to take over the upper road in 2017, but declined because they stated the road was not up to town standards. I'm not going to argue that with you. My two following comments may provide some insights to why I think the town should revisit this and approve it. I did not live here at the time, but from what I understand, the majority of the private substandard road section in our subdivision was actually paved by the town when the sewer lines were installed under the subdivision streets. Question, if the town spent that much money to repave it, then why was it not paved to the required standards at that time and dedicated as a public road? And also, I questioned the quality of enforcement and application. I've seen other roads approved across town last year, for instance. Another road was accepted by the town. Looking at the information submitted in the meeting, town minute meetings, minutes, the road definitely did not meet the town standard. I do not believe it was paved, and the plat drawings showed that it did not have the required 40-foot right-of-way as specified out in the ordinance. My question, how was this road accepted and I request not? Again, I'm only asking for equality, equal treatment. Another topic I'm going to talk about is, in our neighborhood, there's a house that's sitting, that I believe is owned by Fannie Mae. It may be in foreclosure. I don't know. There seems to be an issue with encroachment by that house into the 10-foot building setback from the property line, according to the ordinance. That is, the house is actually less, built less than 10 foot from the property line. This has been known for many years, because this house is probably 30 years old. My question is, was there ever any enforcement action for this violation? Was there any variance issued? I don't know. I can't find any. I do believe that it's still in violation. Does the town just continue to ignore such things? And finally, I will mention the short-term rental thing, which theoretically brought me to look here. My subdivision is zoned R1, single-family residential. Approximately 20% of the homes are currently short-term rental properties. Many have absentee landlords. They seem to be managed well. That is, most owners fully respect others and the neighborhood covenants, and other than our two outstanding garbage issues that I mentioned earlier. Several other homes are considered long-term rentals. Of these, it is suspected that some of them were divided for multifamily, like either duplex and triplex occupants, with like two or three family units living in the same house. The concern here is the subdivision, which in this market has moderately priced houses, could easily turn into a neighborhood with short-term rentals, similar to Bed and Brexton or into multifamily house. Like many of the comments I've heard that were provided by others seeking the R1 zoning enforcement, I thought I had purchased in a single-family residential neighborhood. And last but not least, Mayor Taylor, we talked on September the 16th. It was relative, you called me back relative to your two-year-old question seeking guidance, if the short-term rental was a portion of a home, like if it's a basement apartment or something, that would it make, essentially be making it into a duplex? I do thank you for calling me back. I believe you felt that it did create a duplex, but from what I understood, you had not received any feedback from the guidance you had requested relative, and were not aware of any enforcement. I may be incorrect in this. My guess here is, is if the full short-term rental properties are going to be denied in R1 zoning, this would be a non-issue. If not, it could still be a zoning issue. Closing, why am I here? As a homeowner, I really have concerns for what I see happen. I do, I do want to encourage the town to be consistent in its code and ordinance enforcement process across the board, not just for short-term rentals. I am concerned about what's happening to my neighborhood. I feel that if left unchecked, the short-term rentals have the potential to destroy the established neighborhood by converting it into something different. I do not believe that that would be a good thing for the town of Highlands. I want to look out for my children and my grandchildren who live up here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Another request that I have is Rick Siegel. Rick, would you like to make a comment? Rick? Are you on?
Excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the town board and all of Highlands, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the matter of short-term rentals and express my opinions on this issue. I'm asking you to look at this issue in two different ways, short-term view and a long-term view. The immediate impact on the economy and what is happening here today is very encouraging. There's retailers, retail stores, and benefits from the increased traffic. Shops and restaurants see more customers and absolutely. Real estate sales, current property values, property management folks are feeling the benefits. But right here, I'd like to interject one small fact. The economy of Highlands was not depressed, not suffering prior to the boom in SDRs. We made it through 2008 when the, when the economy took a hit. We made it through 2001 when our country took a hit. Let's try to look at this from another side. Why has the real estate inventory gone down so dramatically? Who's buying these properties? And for what purpose? Are they local folks moving up in life? Or are they Wall Street Journal, Wall Street investment firms? Or just people trying to cash in on the trend? Yes, property values have escalated significantly over the past year, but what's the effect of that? Folks who want to move into a residential area, want to live and work here, they find the prices prohibitive. And the people who own the majority of these rental homes recognize that short-term rental prices offer them a larger reward than long-term. As more and more of the homes and residential areas become rentals, and that is the trend we are seeing today in Highlands, and of course, that's why we're here today. A percentage of rental homes goes up, and the numbers of owners living in their homes goes down. In my neighborhood, Shelby Place, we are today 23 homes. And of those homes, seven are being rented. One of the homes that is now for sale and under contract was also a short-term rental. Some of the rentals are longer terms, which presents less of a problem. But if STRs are permitted to continue in residential areas, who is to say that they won't become short-term rentals? We have a new home under construction and up for sale, and we have no idea what the intention of the buyers will be, when it is sold might be. We have a number of lots still available. And in fact, people have quired about these lots and had intentions of purchase, and stated that they had plans for rentals before the current controversy arose. Point being, more and more properties become rentals. Those percentages continue to climb, and the neighbors, the neighborhoods, will become less and less like neighborhoods, less and less desirable, wanting to live in a neighborhood. There's neighbors that they know and neighbors that they recognize. There is no doubt in my mind that we will see property values decline. Slowly but surely, these neighborhoods will cease to be neighborhoods. The town of Highlands will become unrecognizable compared to the town that it was. That is where we realize what the long-term effects of this issue will be. I don't think any of us, any Highlanders, are against short-term rentals. The question should be, should they be allowed to take over areas that were created for single-family homes? What would be the fate of these areas? Short-term rentals, a commercial enterprise, a fine enterprise for sure, but they should be in commercial areas. The town can look at the current zoning regulations, and I encourage them to do so. The question I was asked is, what was the intent of the writers of the ordinances of R1, R2, and R3 zones? I contend that the end of, the aim of these writers was to keep the residential areas protected against potential use in a home, a home. And the ordinance, as written, do just that. Folks, the concern here is present. The concern is not for today. The concern is for five years from now, 10 years from now. Is the sugar high worth it? And the short-term profit takers, where will they be then? Many of them aren't even living here now. Many don't live here at all. Those enjoying the short-term rentals, will they hang in there to rebuild what we may have lost? I ask you again, is it worth it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Do we have another person wishing to make a public comment? I'm going to take my time here because we're on Zoom.
I would like to make a comment or ask a question.
Well, would you please state your name?
Patsy Thornton.
Okay. Thank you, Patsy.
One question that I have that nobody seems to know the answer so far that I've asked is, besides Sabrina Hawkins, has anybody else been targeted and shut down over the short-term rentals? That was in 2006 when the ordinance came into effect. Has the ordinance been applied to anybody else besides her?
Yeah, I don't know, Patsy, to, to, well, I don't think any of us can really answer that other than say, that was, that, I always assumed that was a little bit different than a short-term rental. Was it not?
It addresses short-term rental in the ordinance. That's what it's, everything has stemmed from that 2006 meeting. And I personally don't know of anybody else that has had to comply the way that Sabrina did, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
Does anybody know if anybody else has been shut down or forced to sell their property?
Um, Patsy, we'll look into that, but you know, right now, that, I don't think it's something we can really discuss without some research.
Okay.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Patty. Okay. Any other comments, question, um, public comments?
I do have a couple that asked to speak. If you can just bear with me a minute.
Okay, sure.
We weren't muted.
Okay, Lala Howie, okay?
Actually, my name is Patty Eiffelman.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Speaking from Lala's house. My husband and I are full-time residents of Highlands. We live in the Bowery neighborhood. I'm speaking against short-term rentals in residence based on my experience in Charleston, South Carolina, where we lived for 22 years before we moved here. During the last few years that we lived in Charleston, short-term rentals were a real hot-topic issue because of the widespread negative effects they were having on the community. Personally, in our neighborhood, we experienced an uptick in trespassing noise, parking problems, and the loss of friends and neighbors who moved away by choice because they'd just gotten fed up with it all, as we eventually did. But the effects were much worse in other communities, particularly the working-class communities of Charleston. Reason that things were so much worse there was that people rented their homes instead of owning them. And so, when short-term rentals became so popular, their landlords, for the most part, either sold out or upgraded. And, you know, entire neighborhoods of working-class people were literally driven out of their communities. In their wake, there were actually several small churches downtown that had to close. They loved the constellations. They know had local people who would come to the services to support them. Shortly before we left, the city of Charleston did pass very broad-scale sweeping restrictions on short-term rentals. And that did make a difference, but it was really too late for us. We'd already made our decision to leave because it had become a place that we no longer enjoyed living. Before choosing Highlands as our
Mr. Mayor, I can barely hear.
Yes, would you please speak up?
Before choosing Highlands as our, as our new home, we, we very carefully reviewed the town's ordinances to make sure that residential areas would be protected from short-term rentals. And we believed then, and we believe now, that the current ordinance, which prohibits commercial overnight accommodation, was intended to prevent short-term rentals in residential areas. So I'm surprised and a little bit disappointed to be speaking on this issue tonight and to feel like my new community and my new neighborhood are at risk. I am asking the major, mayor, and commissioners to maintain and enforce the ban on short-term rentals in R1 areas. And I'd also ask you to continue to monitor their effects in other areas of the community. Based on my experience, I cannot tell you how important this is in order to maintain the livability of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments, Debbie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Jim Bodie, here with my wife, Dolores. We live in the Bowery neighborhood and have, have been full-time residents for the last seven or eight years. We built in the late 90s. And we're proud to be Highlanders, and in, in a large part because we're proud of our neighbors. We're proud of the people we live with. And I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank the town council for their taking action to keep the residential neighborhoods residential. That's why we moved here. That's why we moved into, into Highlands. But you know, as a town council, you have a, you have a tough task because you've got to figure out, not just what the letter of the law says, you've got to figure out how to thrive a community. And I think short-term rentals, while I'm not against people that own them, they are like a cancer. They will grow. I know towns I've researched have 50% of their homes have now transitioned to short-term rentals. That's not why we're here. We're here in Highlands because we, we want neighbors. We want a neighborhood. So, you know, I think if you're looking at, at the purpose of zoning, the purpose of zoning is to keep like properties or like utilization together. And, you know, residential, one zoning is one example, but take the business district. I mean, if the, if the, if the, someone bought a shop on Main Street and opened an X-rated bookstore, would, or even a strip club, you know, a topless club, would that fit the character of Main Street that you want to maintain? I think not. I think it would not. And we, we implore you to try to keep our residential neighborhoods residential, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Carol Gable. You know, like probably everybody on this Zoom call, I just love Highlands, and I've loved it for six decades. My dad brought us here when we were children, and 26 years ago, my husband and I bought our home here. We made a considerable investment of time and money to improve our house, and now it's a home in retirement. I love that until recently, we knew everyone on our street. We knew their children. We felt safe letting those children play out near our narrow street, knowing that we all watch out for each other. But yet, tonight, workers are rushing to finish renovations on five houses that will then make eight short-term rentals on our one small street. But it's not supposed to be this way. Highlands zoning laws guaranteed it. When we first bought our house, we were in the county. But as time went on, it became obvious to all of us on our street that to protect the neighborhood atmosphere that we all cherished, we had to come in the city. And many of you were on the council when we begged you to let us in. It meant that we have to pay more tax, but it was worth it to us because the town zoning laws were clear, and they were a guide to the smart, sustainable growth of Highlands. And it clearly says that in R1, there's no overnight accommodations. Yet, on my street, in the last 12 days, there have been six turnovers of overnight guests in just one short-term rental home. I'm telling you, that's not a neighborhood atmosphere. We are so disappointed to understand tonight that the council plants the delay enforcement of the ban on short-term rentals in R1. Every day you wait, it hurts us. It hurts those of us who now feel betrayed that the, that the zoning laws of the town just don't matter anymore, and that if somebody with more money and, and they, they have more investment in the town, they win, that the zoning laws just simply don't matter. If you're doing long-term planning of a town, anybody that knows about it knows that there needs to be a place for everyone, for every kind of activity. Why shouldn't there be a zone to live in, in Highlands, that is completely free of commercial activity? I think that we need that, and I think it's the lifeblood of long-term sustainable growth in our town. What I'm concerned about is, what I hear tonight is that there are others who support short-term rentals that believe that we should fling open all of Highlands and make all of Highlands a place where short-term rentals are appropriate. I don't agree. I think that is a fast track to strangling the lifeblood of what makes this community so special. And the fact of the matter is, once we lose that, we don't get it back. This is really, really important, as you all know. But I just beg you, please, let's enforce the law. And if we need to discuss about other permutations, let's do it. But every single day you wait. But every single day you wait, more and more people are rushing to get their house on the short-term rental market. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any other comments?
Hello?
Yes.
Hey, I'm Chris Weller, how are you?
All right.
So, I have a house and a short-term rental that's located on Bowery Road. And I want to tell you a little bit about the history because I've heard a lot of people talk about short-term rentals in a manner which I don't recognize. My wife's family has been in Highlands since the nineteen twenties. The property that we own, we purchased in twenty fifteen, was my wife's great-grandmother's, and her name was, um, Ms. Evans. And when we, when we purchased it, there were two small cottages on the property, and they were dilapidated. And when the realtor sold it to us, he says, congratulations, you just bought the eyesore of the neighborhood. So, and we had, because the, neither of the cottages had been touched in literally sixty years. So, we decided to redo both the cottages. We had a builder walk-off during the project, and we were doing this for our family, and we, we intend on retiring on this property in Highlands. And as a result, we decided to convert one of the cottages to a short-term rental. We, we took all that money and turned it back into the property, landscaped the property, upgraded the two cottages, they're beautiful facilities. We've never had a single problem with, uh, any of our renters that we've had over the past four years. And we've been good neighbors and are actively involved in the Neighborhood Association, and in my, in fact, my wife is the secretary treasurer of the Bowery Road Neighborhood Association. And we believe in being good neighbors. If, if people have moved to Highlands thinking that there weren't going to be any short-term renters, they don't know anything about Highlands then. Highlands has been a vacation destination for years and years, and in fact, was specifically founded as a vacation destination by the original founders for people in Atlanta. And in fact, that's actually in the planning documents that, that the, the town has and produced back in, uh, in, in July. There is a way that we can all live together here in harmony, but to label all short-term, uh, renters as, as people who are out of town and don't care about Highlands, et cetera, et cetera, is just false. We only rent one of our cottages. We stay in the other cottage. It is our personal home that we stay in, and we intend to retire in the next few years to that cottage and expand it for ourselves. But there are many people who own short, short-term rentals in this town who have family property. And their ability to actually rent out their places helped them to refurbish their homes, re-landscape their yards, put their children through college, and be participants in the community. They are all actively involved in Highlands. I heard all these people talk, you act like we don't care about Highlands, that we're bad neighbors. I can't tell you how many people I send to the restaurants of Highlands, to the, to the fishing guides of Highlands, to the, the, the hotels, the spas, all these people are, are, create economic, uh, you know, energy for the entire town. And if you've got somebody who's having a problem with garbage or noise or whatever, there are ways to approach that. That, that, that can be handled directly with the owner. It can certainly be handled through the police department if you're violating noise ordinances or other things. But I just want to let people know that there are, there are many people out there who have short-term rentals that are good neighbors and good owners. And with respect to somebody saying that they just want to enforce the law, I'm act, I'm absolutely for enforcing the law. You know, I'm an attorney. I researched the regulations before I bought my house, before we looked at it, and I knew what the short-term rentals prohibitions and non-prohibition rules were. And I relied on those, and I invested, and my wife and I invested a lot of money in order to re-establish these two cottages which had been dilapidated. Uh, and I, I would challenge anybody to come by our house, come have a drink with us, and, and find out just what kind of neighbors we are. Ask our friends and neighbors. But I asked, I asked the board to reverse the decision that it made back on the twenty-fourth of August. And if, if you want to amend the zoning ordinance for prospective application to somehow limit future, uh, vacation rentals, that's the prerogative of the board. But for those people who have relied on the town's action or inaction in representations and have invested money and have built their homes, I, I would ask the board to strongly consider reversing the August twenty-fourth decision it had made, and I appreciate your, uh, consideration and allowing me a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any more? And I would remind people, we need, if you're going to speak, please keep it three minutes, but do we have anyone else?
We have Sarah Benson.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sarah Benson. And like the previous speaker, Chris, I own a home. It's been in my family three generations. I believe that short-term rentals are residential use, it's not commercial. And I hate the divisiveness that's going on in town right now. It's horrible. But one of the things I'm hearing is that short-term rentals are owned by greedy profit seekers, and the word here, the hot button tends to be greedy. And so I ask, what is an acceptable amount of profit? Long-term owners, rental owners are also making a profit. They have to make a profit. Is there a limit on the amount of acceptable profits? So that's my question, is, is this a violation of federal antitrust laws? When you start to regulate the amount of profit, what's acceptable or what's not? My next-door neighbor runs a short-term rental. He has for a number of years, and I never once had a problem with his occupants. I think one time there was a dog barking, but other than that, they have all been respectful. They come from all over the country, Atlanta, Charleston, New Orleans. So I am asking that the committee reverse its decision on the short-term rental ban until more research has been conducted and, uh, more counsel has been sought. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Gibby, do we have any more speakers?
I do not have any more.
Okay, thank you. With that said, let's move on then to review and approve the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I had wanted to, we don't have the approval of the August nineteenth or sex, September sixteenth executive session minutes, and I know those are requests for those, and seems like we need to get those done.
Mr. Ward, your response? Josh?
I'm sorry, is he asking about closed session minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, those are approved in closed session. And we don't have a closed session on.
We'll do that at the next closed session then.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Miss Commissioner Hane?
Who's her?
Okay.
I'm only I'm only approve the agenda.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor, um, I will call the roll and, and get the vote. Commissioner Patterson? What is your vote? I. Commissioner Callaway?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler? Okay. Unmute. You're muted.
How about now? Aye.
Aye. And then Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Dotson was, um, en route tonight. I don't know if he has arrived yet. You see all the Zoom yet?
I am here.
All right. What is your vote then, sir?
Aye.
Thank you. We have approved the agenda. Now, item number four, and we have four of these items to cover. Approval of the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular minute meetings. Do we have any changes, additions, or corrections to those meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by, signify by aye. Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
And then Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next one would be the approval of the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one reconvened regular minutes, meeting minutes. Do we have any changes, additions, or corrections to those minutes?
A move, they be approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me call the vote. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote? Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the third group of minutes would be the August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one special meeting minutes. Do we have any changes to those?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, fine. Commissioner Patterson, your vote? Commissioner, oh, Callaway?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
All right. Then finally, the approval of the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular minute meeting minutes. Do we have any changes, corrections to those minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Commissioner Patterson, your vote? Okay. Commissioner Callaway, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson, your vote? You're muted, Commissioner Dotson. Do we have an aye? Commissioner Dotson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay. You've got an aye vote. Okay, Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item, number five, reports, and we'll start off with the mayor's report, reports. Let me just say one thing. Um, you know, a lot of times people complain about police departments and what police do. We get a few of those in Highlands, but we get a lot of positive feedback about our police department. And I just wanted to pass on to the public and the, the Board of Commissioners. I, I received, um, communication from Patrick, um, Bet, Better Court, who is our director of, um, of social services for the Mecken County, um, community. And he pointed out to me that, um, our chief, Chief Holland has been very committed to the welfare of, of young people and children. And there was an incident in our community just recently where a parent was, um, potentially holding a child and was refusing to do the right thing and turning it over to the proper authorities. And our police chief had the presence of mind, had the skills to work with that parent to convince him very, um, clearly and, and, and quickly to cooperate with the authorities for the betterment of that child and the welfare of that child, and also for everyone concerned. And, um, Patrick was very impressed with how our police chief handled that situation, and I just wanted to commend Chief Holland for her work, especially, um, supporting young people. So I just wanted to make that, um, that known. Thank you, Chief Holland. The other thing, after the last meeting, um, Josh Ward and I met with, uh, the attorneys who will be reviewing the short-term rental issue that we heard about tonight in public comment. Um, I've asked Commissioner Patterson and Commissioner Steeler, um, this month to be, um, if you will, kind of an advisory information group, and they have met with the attorneys and have engaged in conversations, answered questions as the attorneys are trying to review and get a complete picture of the issue of short-term rentals in our ordinances. I asked these two commissioners to, uh, to serve as this kind of a resource group because they were on the board when we had the UDO development up to two thousand and ten where it was adopted. So here is the situation. That process will continue toward the end of the month. After that, we will be having in November a joint meeting of the Town Board of Commissioners and the Town Planning Board. It'll be a joint commission, uh, meeting, and our attorneys will then, at that time, provide a report. Will provide possible options and come advise and guidance on how to proceed with this issue. It will be a public meeting, and then we will mouth out a way to continue to address how to, um, deal with the, um, ordinances and address this issue of short-term rentals. So I wanted to give everybody a, a, a heads-up and information that that's where we're headed, um, on addressing this, um, this critical issue. Um, one other thing that I wanted to, um, talk about tonight, I'm on the Transportation, um, Advisory Board of the Southwestern Commission. We had a meeting this past month, and Commissioner Ronnie Bill of Mecken County expressed a concern that, um, I think we all should be concerned about, and that was that our North Carolina Department of Transportation is struggling with financing roads. The motor fuel tax is not fully funding roads. There's increased inflation on construction, land acquisition, just so many things to where they are really struggling making a budget. Um, one of the proposals has been for the DOT to turn over all maintenance of any county road, state road rather, in a county, over to the counties to where, for example, we have a maintenance facility operated by DOT with equipment here in Mecken County. One of the ideas would be that that would just be turned over, all of that equipment and personnel would be turned over to each county, and the counties would have to then be responsible for many of the state roads. For example, Poplar Street is a state road. Many of our roads in, in Highlands are actually state roads, not town roads. Commissioner Bill and I both are concerned about this because it would be a great cost savings of strategy for the state, but it would be a new tax burden for the residents of, of the counties because it would cost a lot of money to take over the maintenance of many of those state roads. Um, and we're kind of a unique, I, I think about four, um, states and the Union has the system that North Carolina has where the state DOT maintains all roads throughout the county. So that is something that, um, I know Commissioner Bill was going this week to Raleigh to, to lobby against, and, um, I'll be working with, um, you know, Commissioner Bill and everything about how this progresses. I would not like to see that come about unless there'd be a long-term guarantee that financial support from the state would follow. So that's my report. Um, and I will now turn it over to the commissioners for any committee reports or individual reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Betsy and I were walking yesterday, and a gentleman walked up to us, and he said, I know who you are. And, uh, we feel that Highlands has lost its charm. We're tired of the bickering. We're tired of the division. We can't even get a dinner reservation, and they said they're moving away, and I was a little surprised, and, uh, I think it's something we need to reflect on trying to bring peace back to this community.
Thank you. Any other commissioner reports? Hearing none, I'll move over to the town manager, Josh Ward. Do you have a report?
As many of you have seen, Bryson's paving, got the baby paving contract this year for us. I paved Spring Street last week. They finished up. Looks really good. In the next few weeks, they'll be moving to, uh, Sherwood Forest as well as Upper and Lower Lake. So be looking for that here in the next few weeks. Also, the fire department is moving, uh, rather quickly. I met with them yesterday, and they're looking to have a dry-in, uh, sometime the first week of December. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item number six is the consent agenda. Any questions about the consent agenda?
A move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, very good. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, okay. Commissioner, um, Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Dotson? But we haven't lost him. Commissioner Dotson?
Can you not hear him?
Yes, I can hear you now, and I can see you now. Great.
Miracles never see. Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Hayne, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item will be the postponement of the public hearing for the Ellis Annexation, Michael Mathis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ellis is requesting that the public hearing be rescheduled for next month's meeting. The Apklin is working on a conservation easement agreement with the Ravenel Homeowners Association and isn't ready to proceed with the annexation at this time. The staff recommendation is to reschedule the public hearing for next month's meeting. That's all I've got.
All right.
A move. We accept the request.
Second.
Second. All right, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway? Commissioner Dotson? Commissioner Dotson?
He's frozen again.
He's frozen.
He said yes. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hayne?
Aye.
Thank you. We will then have that hearing scheduled for our next board meeting in November. All right, the next item is the Crooked Creek subdivision preliminary plat review. Michael Mathis.
A subdivision application was submitted to the Planning Department by I P F I Number One L L C concerning a property subdivision at four fifteen Foreman Road. Currently, the property is five point three eight acres located in the R two zoning district and the balance of the town's watershed, watershed three. According to the town's Unified Development Ordinance, eight point two point one dimensional standards, the minimum lot size for a property located in the R two zoning district and the balance area of the town's watershed three is half an acre. According to the preliminary plat prepared by L Stephen Foster and Associates, the five point three eight acre parcel will be split into four lots. First lot is one point six seven acres. The second lot is one point zero six acres. The third lot is one point two four acres, and the fourth lot is one point four one acres. Lot one and two will have their own driveways, and lot three and four will share a driveway as shown on the plat. All lots will be served by town water and electric. Lot three contains an existing dwelling with an existing septic tank. Mecon County has issued improvement permits for the remaining three lots. The recommendation is to approve the Crooked Creek preliminary plat as submitted, and I do want to add that the Planning Board did review this at their last meeting on October, or excuse me, September twenty-seventh, and they approved it. But on the condition that it was explained that the shared driveway for lots three and four, there was a statement for the use, maintenance, and ownership of the road. I talked to the surveyor, and he did add that there will be an easement. And he put it on the plat, as you can see, on lot one, and said that this will not serve lot one. The shared drive will only be for lots three and four, and I have discussed it with Jay, who I believe has approved it as well. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I'll move. We approve the subdivision plat as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let me take the vote. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson, we've got you back here. Your vote?
I'm trying hard here. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Callaway, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hayne?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That has been approved. All right, number nine, the authorization for stay of proceedings of short-term rentals. This is in connection with the lawsuit that we were served recently by the Save Highlands Association. So I'm going to turn this over to our town attorney, Mr. Coward, who will give us an update in his recommendation. Mr. Coward?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I want to report that the working group that Mayor Taylor appointed, including Mr. Steeler and Ms. Patterson, myself, and Craig Justice, has met on two occasions for approximately six hours to discuss the situation with short-term rentals. The last action that you took requested or required that we reexamine the U D O and try to come up with better definitions and interpretations of what the U D O means. That will probably mean that we'll have to do some revisions of the U D O and that we'll have to add some language that addresses the situation of short-term rentals. There's nothing in the U D O at all that addresses short-term rentals. So we don't have a good U D O that we can refer to when trying to decide how to go forward. We anticipate that at our next meeting, which is going to be next week, that we might have a working document that will explain to the full board and the planning board when it meets in November, what our final conclusions are. So as the mayor indicated in his comments, this group is very functional, and we're working real hard to try to address the dilemma that we have in the town of Highlands, which has brought so much controversy and conflict. In the meantime, the group of people who are represented by Mr. Derek Allen brought a lawsuit against the town of Highlands. And in a very lengthy document, I think there was two hundred and two hundred and seventy-five different paragraphs in this complaint. In that document, it asked for a lot of things chiefly to allow S T Rs to continue to operate in town of Highlands. Mr. Justice and I talked about this, and we felt that we should talk with Mr. Allen, who represents this group, about how a lawsuit, it would divert the good efforts that the town is making to address the situation and cause us to expend an enormous amount of energy in litigation and very little in trying to address the problem itself. And we talked with him about that, and he agreed that that there would be very little movement of any positive nature whatsoever if we had an ongoing lawsuit that required us to be in court rather than to be in conference rooms working this out. So we suggested that we enter into what's called a stay of proceedings. This is an order that would be signed by a judge with the consent of the two parties, town of Highlands and numerous other plaintiffs. The number's too long to tell you how many there are or who they are. But during this stay, which would last until February the first, there would be no requirement that the town had to answer the complaint. There would be no discovery conducted. That would be like interrogatories and depositions and requests for documents and all of that, which, you know, generates an enormous amount of time. None of that would be required. There would be no hearings in front of the court. There would be no presentation of evidence or testimony. Everything would be stayed till the February first, pending our attempts to let this working group and the Planning Board and the full town council make a decision about the U D O. We, so we reached an agreement, and we discussed this with working group yesterday, and they agreed that this would be a good thing to present to the full board. Now, the draft that has been prepared by Mr. Derek Allen is not final. It is a document that Mr. Justice and I will be working on. And since he is the one that we hired at the request of the town as the person with the requisite expertise, he will be the one that's heading that effort up. I tried to get in touch with him today, and basically what I got was I'm not finished with my draft of this particular order, and we haven't conferred with Derek Allen, the attorney for the plaintiffs about it. But the gist of it would be this, and what I'm suggesting to this board is that it authorized me to sign this on behalf of the board and Mr. Justice to sign this consent order, staying proceedings, is that we would stop, and we would not attempt to enforce anything against the S T Rs until we make a decision about what the U D O actually says, and that would be by vote of the full board in an amendment to the U D O. Of course, this requires the planning board to also be participate in it. So we think that this could be done before February the first. So the board would need to rescind the action it had taken earlier to enforce this order as of January the third and authorize us to continue to work on U D O without any enforcement until we reach that point where we have a new revised U D O or February the first, whichever comes first. This will also require a document that, the draft that I have looks seventy-five percent okay, and I've expressed that to Mr. Justice, and he's going to do some wordsmithing on it and come up with it. But the gist, again, will be we will stay enforcement of the U D O saying that, and our interpretation, that S T Rs are not permitted in R one. And they will stay any further proceedings in court.
Jay, I have a question for you. That's not saying if we go with this stay that we are conceding that we can't enforce the R one S T Rs. We're simply delaying this whole process until we've had a chance to come up with this news response on February the first. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I mentioned to you and Jay on the twenty-third of August and then on the twenty-fourth that Russell versus Donaldson seems to indicate that short-term rentals are residential in nature, and our regulations are vague, the law's not straight. So I agree with Jay. I make the motion that we rescind any action to ban short-term rentals on January the third. And I don't think you put a deadline on it. There's a lot of work to do, a lot of input. And Jay, there's been conflicting information in the paper, what you've said publicly. We know opinions changed, and I'm glad you said what you did tonight. Let me make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just say.
We have a motion? Okay, go ahead. Let me, go ahead.
Just going to say that February first is not written in stone. It may take longer. So, but it will be the first stay date that we reached right now. If we need more time later on, I'm sure they would probably, if they saw that we were working in good faith towards a solution, that they would probably agree to extend that stay out.
Commissioner Hayne, I want a clarification on your motion. Are you also in your motion asking the board to vote on the stay as the counselor has put forward?
Yes, sir. I certainly agree that we need to stay it. I don't think you can put any deadline on it. There's so much to be resolved. I think you just have to move ahead in good faith.
So your motion would say, would be to rescind the January third order and to engage in a stay with the lawyer and the complainant?
And proceed in good faith. Provide the minutes they requested and everything else. Yes, sir. Sir, yes, sir.
Well, we certainly would do that.
I think, however, I think that we need to have a date because I know what a judge is going to say. The judge is going to have to sign this order. He's going to say, until when? We're going to say February first, and if it looks like we need to go beyond that date, then we'll reapply and get an extension on that order.
Commissioner Hayne, would you be amenable to the February first?
I think July the first, I think July the first is much more reasonable. I don't see how you can get all this work done by then.
I've got one question for Jay. Is there any way to address the concern that a lot of people have expressed tonight about new pop-up S T Rs?
About the rush to get.
Yeah, bring them in now and.
Yeah, there is some concern, and I think that's why we are working so hard to get it done by February the first as opposed to a later date.
But there's nothing we can do now to stop the new coming in?
Well, here's the situation. If if the people who have been using their homes as S T Rs over a long period of time have developed a vested right, as that is explained in the law, sometimes called grandfathering. If they have done that, then then they have a right to continue that use of the property. But that requires, you know, in the common law, that requires a period of time, a certain amount of investment that shows that they relied on a law as they interpreted it. That's a lot different. People who are rushing to get to a point to have their rights vested because their rights aren't vested right now. It's more probable that we're going to be going to a permit application process we will talk about further the next time we meet, next Wednesday, and have something to bring to the board about how that whole process would work.
Well, I also think we need a clarification of, one of the candidates has stated that we had a registration that you could go on the town website, and that was only put in for the emergency of the COVID. Is that not correct?
That is correct. The only reason that there was a registration of U D Os was as part of the emergency order that was entered by the governor and by the mayor and this council.
We need to let Pat Allen know that.
Okay. All right. I don't want to, Commissioner Hayne has made a motion on the floor. We haven't gotten a second, but I want to go back, Commissioner, and just make sure we've got it down. Your motion would be to remove the enforcement order on January third to authorize our attorneys to sign a stay, and you're proposing July first for the timeframe.
And Jay, that just seems much more reasonable to me. I mean, you have to have public hearings, comments at the Planning Board, the Town Board. That's going to take a long time. I just don't see any way you can get that done during.
Yeah, I'm going to judge, I'm going to base my opinion on our attorney.
And the attorney advised us that it could be done.
Okay, so he's not willing to change his motion. Let's go on with the vote, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm asking Jay. I asked Jay. Jay, I don't see any way that we could get it done by February.
Mark, he told you three times he could do it. Mark, he told you three times you could do it.
I'm s- suggesting that we're working really hard on it right now. And that February first is not an unreasonable date and that a judge who's going to sign this order is going to require us to put a date in. If it looks like that we have not. Made enough progress, we'll go to the judge and say we need a month or we need another two months. And I'm sure that the judge. Would, would listen to both parties if they agreed on that point. Uh, you know, we've had public comment for months on this. Uh, if we, if we, and I'm keeping score. I know what the score is right now. And right now. We have a lot of public comment that would, uh, that we should take into consideration in addition to public comment that's going to come up later on. Uh, so. And, and the planning board is, has made great strides in their, their plan that is part of their, of the complaint. That has been filed. I assume that everyone has read that document. It's, it's very extensive. And we look forward to working with the planning board on it as soon as we possibly can. That's the Highlands Community Plan two thousand and twenty-one update. So. When we meet with the planning board about that, I think at the end of, of that meeting, which I would imagine is going to be quite lengthy, we'd be ready for public comment about. Where we want to go. And we could schedule that and, and if it, we're moving up against the Christmas deadline, then we can, we can divert it to January. And if it looks like we still don't have enough time, like I said, we'll just go to a judge and ask for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll agree to February the first.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Um, do I have a second on Commissioner Hain's motion?
Second.
All right, very good. Um, let me just take a vote then. Commissioner Patterson, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote? Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hain?
Aye.
Okay, so Jay, you, you understand now how to proceed with.
Yes.
Addressing the state, correct?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next item. On the agenda, number ten, that'd be the fiber contract review and I'm going to call on Matt Schuler to. Do the introductions on the fiber contract. And I think we have some folks who are joining us. For this review also.
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Mayor. Give you, I'll ask you, you will go ahead and promote. Uh, Mr. Jim Baller, Mr. Sean Stokes and. Mr. Mr. Gabriel Doucibon to panel.
Okay.
The Town of Highlands issued a RFP in October of two thousand and twenty. On October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three proposals were received. Of those three proposals. The town board chose Hotwire Communications to enter into a contract with. Since that time, staff along with legal counsel Jake Howard. Have formed a, a legal team with Jim Baller, Sean Stokes. Of Keller and Heckman L L P in Washington, D C. And Mr. Gabriel de Sabl- uh, Doucibon of Colley and Pridgen Lawyers of North Carolina. To develop and negotiate a contract. That followed the RFP issued by the town to accomplish the town's goals currently and in the future. To follow all applicable laws, including North Carolina state laws and was agreeable to Hotwire Communications. The document you have before you is a result of this effort. The full legal team and Mr. Jonathan Hotwire of Jonathan Bullock. I'll also ask, uh, give you if she will promote. I about forgot that. Uh, of Hotwire Communications, uh, they're present, uh, in this conference to answer any questions. And the staff recommendation would be to approve the Hotwire contract.
Okay, and I mean, let me add, our, our, our town board of commissioners have had this contract for review for at least two weeks. We requested that if any questions, major questions arose that they would bring them in to, um. Our awareness so we could refer them to the, um, appropriate attorney for response. So. Hearing that, do we have any other questions or comments about this contract?
Mr. Mayor, I gave Josh a couple of questions to discuss with Jay that I didn't get the answers to.
Yes, Mark, Mark submitted several questions. Uh, I gave those to Jay and Jay, I believe. I've spoken with, uh, Jim and, and Sean. Uh, about that. Jay, do you want to review those or? Uh, Commissioner Hain, would you like to go down that list one by one?
Jay, the biggest one was the easement to make sure the easement was perpetual. That we would dictate the language as they acquire easements. Were you okay with that? Uh, be a general utility easement that if it was sold or would default that we don't, we would have the right to use it. I just wanted to dictate the language of the general utilities.
What? What we discussed was that these. What we're going to be leasing to the, to hot wires is already owned by, uh, Town of Highlands now.
Right.
And that the, the lease i- is, is of itself a property right. But that we don't need to, to add to it, uh, as, and make it into a. Uh, an easement per se, since we own it. We're, they basically have a right as, as less than to use the, the. Property that we have. And i- if Mr. Baller wants to.
That's not my question, Jay. I'm sorry. My question was as they extend. The underground into the subdivisions that don't have overhead and they acquire easements. That you would dictate the form of the easement so we could use them. If they, if somebody else acquires it. That was my question.
Jim, do you want to address that?
You're muted, Jim.
I believe you're muted, Jim.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Well, I understand that. What Jay addressed a moment ago is the lease of your facilities, which is what this is about. And as to those. You're leasing facilities and whatever. Easements and rights and the public rights away. Uh, you have will be. Uh, continued through the process going forward. And so far as the extension of the system is concerned. We understand that most of that will be in the public rights of way. And so you're saying no?
Those are asked a year and a half ago that we start working on easements and that I wasn't. But they're mostly private streets. That were underground and they'll need to get some sort of easements. And I think the question is, and we don't know. If they got easements on those flats for utilities or not. And those are questions we just don't know.
I would think, I would, let me just say this. I would think then here. Uh, a permission to run those undergrounds in these private subdivisions constitute an easement if, if, if those people then decided they did not walk the service. And, 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 and stopped it, it's stopping them from having that service. But, um, I don't see how we have some type of, of easement. When there is a private agreement between Hotwire and the people that they're extending the service to.
We're not at cross purposes, Mayor. I'm just, you know, if. If Hotwire was not able to continue and they went under. And we had to take it over or somebody else, or if they decided to sell it to somebody else, I just wanted to make sure the easements. Are perpetual and, and it, it would just be a simple matter of. Providing them with the language we wanted them to use for any easements they acquire. If there are subdivisions with easements already great, but if we have to acquire some, I just wanted to make sure the language is perpetual. And I've been through this before, so.
Mr. Bullock, what is your response to this?
Generally speaking, you know, w- we'll build out into the public right of way. There's a principle in federal law called the compatible uses rule. And as a franchise cable operator or a CLEC or local exchange carrier, whether it's NALIC or CLEC. You have the right to build in public utility easements and, and also easements that have been dedicated for compatible use. Um, and that would include things like power easements, water utility easements, communications easements. To the extent that any home has. Power, water, or any communication services to its home today. It would fundamentally under federal law grant that right. To someone else delivering those services to bring that, um. And again, not your legal opinion for you, the city is, I'm not a lawyer, but like, that would grant you the right to run up that easement. Um, additionally, you know, as I'm sure the lawyers here can speak to, there's things like prescriptive easements. Once you put something in the ground, it's there. As a matter of law, um, this is something done every day. Without easements granted, it's called IRUs. You have large enterprises like Zayo, Unity, Fiberlight. They have nationwide fiber networks where they sell pieces of their fiber networks to other operators and other, uh, people. And no easements granted, but because the, uh, fiber's been put in the ground pursuant to. A previously prescribed right, then it's considered valid. So I, I, I can't imagine this being an issue for anybody. You know, and to the extent that a resident doesn't want fiber to their home. I would feel that that would be a disadvantage to that resident more than anybody else.
Other questions?
Jay, do you agree with that? If we have to build out the Ravenel and they're all private streets and then we want to make sure we've got some kind of easement there?
We're not building it. They, Hotwire will.
I understand that, right?
But my opinion is that if, if you're going to, if Hotwire is going to build out, uh. If it's a commercially reasonable thing for them to do. If they're going to build out. That they're going to, before they start, before they put the shovel in the ground. Are going to have some sort of agreement. From the landowners that they can put that wire in the ground. Now, how that's going to be. Documented at that time. Is, is not really addressed that I can tell that. In this agreement in the terms of an easement. But it is certainly something that's not going to happen unless there is an agreement by the landowners. And the community that this is going to be built into their community. If they basically say, no, we're not going to do that, then Hotwire is not going to build the. Build that infrastructure in. So I'm thinking from a practical standpoint, we need to see how that plays out in the future before we can. We can guess at it right now.
I agree with that. I just think we want to make sure the. As we work on that, the language is perpetual and not just for one entity.
I'm sure that, uh, Hotwire would certainly want it to be as, as long-lived as possible and as. Enforceable under law as possible and would take every effort necessary to make sure that happened.
Only other question, I, I had two, two things. One was the, uh, financial guarantee, but Josh said y'all weren't successful in negotiating that, Jay. Any sort of performance bond or letter of credit?
See, Hotwire said that was an absolute deal killer, uh, and they would, they would. Back out if, if we require a performance.
Okay, well.
Jay, may I ask the further, you have looked at their financials once again. You've done a second review, correct?
I have, and, uh, it, under the same structures that we had. When, when we looked at them first, Matt and I have looked at them and I, I do not fear that this company is. Uh, not financially stable and mature. I think that they, they're really sound financially. And, um, we shouldn't worry about that.
Mayor, I'd like to have a little bit of fun. Can I have just a little bit of fun? When we took, when we took proposals from wide open and I voted against it. They were only going to pay us two million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, eighteen dollars and ten cents.
Correct.
I voted against it. I wanted to take proposals and please let me enjoy this. We're going to get six million dollars now, which is three point two million dollars more. I think that's great.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve this contract?
Don't move.
Second.
Second. Any further discussions? Hearing none.
Wait, 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 Mayor, Mayor Taylor. Let me, let me greatly applaud. The town, especially Matt and the negotiating team for the town for pulling this off. It's been a long ride and it's been a complicated process. We came close before and the prior. Uh, negotiating partner pulled out at the last moment, so I applaud you for getting to this point. And I wish you all the very best going forward.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Patterson, what is your vote?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Dotson, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway, your vote? Your vote? Okay.
I'm not muted.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steeler, your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hain, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I want to, you know, we've been working on this seven years and following on what, um, Mr. Baller said, I just want to read kind of a, a, a statement of appreciation also. And so please indulge, indulge me on this and then I'll throw the floor open. It's been a long and a major effort in developing the Highland Smart Cities Fiber Optic System. Staff, commissioners, attorneys and experts have been working on this project for seven years and many, in many respects, it's been. A learning, learning experience that caused the town to rethink plans, adjust strategies. Especially as this technology and industry has at times witnessed rapid changes and unforeseen changes. I believe the network and, and lease agreement with Hotwire Communications will have a lasting impact on the future of Highlands and how we all live. Work and enjoy this wonderful community. Our businesses, homes, town utility operations, educational and medical services will all be. Um, transformed because we have this state-of-the-art system. While other communities continue to plan for such fiber systems, Highlands now has a world-class net- network in place. And it will be operational. I want to thank the Highlands Town Board of Commissioners for their support and hard work over the past years in developing this fiber network. I want to also thank the town staff for the many hours that they have devoted to this project. Especially Josh Ward, our town manager and Matt Schuler, our information and technology director. Matt has spent countless hours. As a representative to the various groups involved in the project. He's had the patience and the endurance to see this project to its completion. Josh and Matt will now move into new roles as to making sure that the administration of the contract is implemented in a smooth transition. Also want to thank our attorneys who helped the town navigate and negotiate all the legal issues related to developing this network. Jim Baller and Sean Stokes at the national level, Gabriel DeShaw, DeShaw at the state level and Jake Howard, our town attorney. I also want to thank the companies that the town staff and board members met with as a part of this effort. And those who took the time to submit proposals. We had a very good response rate and I believe that we selected the best proposal for the town. And finally, I want to thank the folks at Hotwire for their willingness to invest and serve the community of Ho- Highlands. We appreciate Jonathan Bullock of Hotwire and his determination to bring their extensive services to Highlands. We look forward. To a productive and mutually beneficial relationship. So. Congratulations to everyone. I'm, I'm glad that we are going to be moving forward with this and I'll throw it open to the. Members of the commission if you'd like to make any comments. Anyone else? Jim or Jonathan?
I just like to say we're excited to be a part of the Highlands community and to bring, um, multi-gigabit broadband to a. Town that, um, you know, needs broadband and, um, and bring all the benefits of that. With it and, you know, when we come into a community, become a part of it and we're looking forward to. Being y'all's neighbor and employer and, um, civic, civic partner.
Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, there are more, no more comments. Let's move on to the next item. Which is item eleven, the fiber construction contract liquidated damages, Matt Schuler. Matt, you're muted?
There we go. My wife was also telling me I was muted and I had the screen changed over onto the document I was about to read. After discussion with uh Mr. Jay Coward. Coward Hicks and Soller issued a letter to V1 Fiber on behalf of the town as a notification that liquidated damages would begin. On the fiber deployment project effective August eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Since that time, all construction items have been completed. Final inspection was performed successfully today. So at this point, the engine along with Mr. Coward will calculate the total liquidated damages as the final closed-up package is uh completed. That's really all I have in the report. Uh, our inspector was here today. I spoke to him just at closing time. V1 had three items that remained, uh very small items. One was a guy uh that needed to be installed on a pole. Uh, the other two items were additional insulators that needed to be installed on two guide wires. Those have been completed. So all of the construction items have now been completed. Our engineers are reviewing the fiber testing. And we expect that to be very successful testing. Uh, we uh witnessed most of that firsthand uh with our own staff. So we assume that's gonna be very uh done very well. So a- at this point, uh, basically, the the project is is now coming to a close. We expect uh very soon to have the engineer's approval on everything on the project. So those things will take a a little while, but uh we're gonna let uh Jay. Work with uh our engineers to calculate total liquidated damages and and those sorts of things before the town gives final payment to V1.
So the the liquidated damages would be withheld from the final payment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's that's correct.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Jay? Hey Jay, I I happened to see the the communications engineer with Fiber One happened to be in front of my house. Two weeks ago and uh I got an airful, but as y'all negotiate liquidated damages, I understand there are lots of. Spare parts and pieces that uh. Were available at one time, might have been shipped out, but uh had to be restocked and things that might be useful to have on hand and. It's just thinking out of the box about what the value of those is and as you negotiate a a number.
Uh, actually, uh, Mr. Hane, uh, we have been over that with our engineers. And we, the way the units were on the the contract, we didn't pay for anything that they didn't use. So all the items that are left on the yard right now are all their items. Uh, we actually paid per pole and per assembly.
You you don't understand what I'm saying, Matt. I I what I'm saying is they have spare parts. And as we negotiate a number, that's something we might think about, Jay. You know. Some value for that and that's that's what I'm saying.
Okay. And Matt, we we need no action other than this is an informational. Uh, point that we will seek liquidated damages, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we also have been to that yard and we have uh taken the items that uh that were still useful. Off of the out, off of the yard. So uh, any other items? Uh, they've already negotiated that with uh Mr. Bond. Uh, that was the owner of the yard, it was Nick Bond. And Mr. Bond's gonna sell those for scrap.
Okay.
We brought back a truckload of of items that they allowed us to have at no charge because they were gonna give them all away or throw them in the trash can.
Okay. All right. Shall we now move on to the next item, number twelve, the Big Bear Pen Tower update?
Matt Schuler? Pulling that document up now. Okay, in August nineteenth meeting, uh, the Board of Commissioners. Uh, Mr. Cooper, Chuck Cooper raised the concern of Verizon mounting too close to his radome antenna at the top of uh. The town's big bear pen tower. Uh, WHLC's radome is mounted at a hundred and seven feet. Uh, center of radiation above ground level. Uh, Verizon was found to be mounted in the correct position on the tower per their contract with the town at a hundred feet. Uh, center, center of radiation above ground level. Uh, staff requested Mr. Cooper to submit documentation and or a report that showed the level of interference that he may be receiving. Uh, this document has not been received by the town at the time of this writing. Uh, so a few staff action items. Uh, I requested that Verizon would lower their antennas two feet as part of this solution. Uh, they agreed to do that. The last week, Verizon attempted to go to this tower to lower the the antennas. And uh, Mr. Cooper had uh refused to lower the antenna of the power to a safe enough level. So I also had uh had contacted uh Sink Tower Incorporated. To uh, to raise Mr. Cooper's antenna from a hundred and seven feet to a hundred and ten feet. That would restore the separation from equipment to the same as the original, as it was before the town had ever done. Uh, the the twenty-foot extension. And uh, since that time, Mr. Cooper's requested his antenna to be uh at a hundred and eighteen feet. And the lightning rod be five feet above his antenna. That would require some additional engineering and that would increase the overall height of the tower to a hundred and twenty-three feet plus the lightning rod. So. We've uh, I've got a. A a proposal from Kimberly Horn, who's an engineer uh for towers. And for them to do a structural analysis to move the radome, uh, Mr. Cooper's radome to a hundred and eighteen feet. Uh, that would be seventeen hundred dollars and to design an attachment detail for that. Uh, to make sure that the radome would be supported correctly would be another one thousand dollars. Now, that's not construction cost. Those are. Those, those are only engineering. But uh, we had a few other things that came up. Verizon did indeed try to go and and to lower their antennas down as well to do their upgrades. Um, as as most of you know, if you have a Verizon cell phone right now, your your cell phone uh doesn't work very well in Highlands. Uh, Verizon is aware of that and they have been attempting to make this change since uh July. They reached out in uh July the twelfth to Mr. Cooper to uh to schedule this. Uh, he informed uh that he was not receptive to them performing work. And this is actually construction notes from the Erickson team that came on site. Um, so since July, they they've spoken to Mr. Cooper numerous times. And uh, the the final time, uh, they were actually, um, this was on the fourteenth of this month. Uh, they started to do the upgrade, but the FM station, WHLC, only turned their power down uh to a partial setting. And each climber uh carries a a personal RF detector. And that detector was at one hundred percent as they climbed halfway up the tower. Uh, they proceeded to climb on up and if they, as they got to the top of the tower, their alarms were going off at two hundred percent. Because the the antenna for WHLC, they uh would not turn it down any lower. So the climbers immediately came to the ground. Uh, they contacted WHLC. They would not turn the power down any lower. Uh, so they stopped progress again. So uh Verizon can uh cannot um. Complete their work. Uh, in review of this, uh, and I can let Josh speak to this. But he'd asked Jay to to review the 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 contracts and WHLC's contract is currently dead. Uh, with the town. It went out in two thousand nineteen. It was a ten-year contract. So currently, there's, there's no WHLC contract. So we, we have two issues. Uh, the the one is more immediate. For Verizon to be able to uh amend and change their antenna. Uh, to do their upgrades. Uh, they need Mr. Cooper to turn his power down. So we would ask the board to to um, to direct Mr. Cooper to to turn his power down. And to um coordinate a date with Verizon that they could be on site. And he would agree to turn the power down to the point so that this, uh, so Verizon can make their upgrades. And then the the second item would be for uh Mr. Coward to um. Redraft a a new contract with WHLC. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn that back over to you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of um, Matt?
Mr. Mayor, I saw Mr. Cooper uh last night. And and we've got a gigantic communication problem with you and Chuck and Matt and. Josh could get in one room. I don't think we, I think y'all, that's what needs to be, he says he's not hearing returned phone calls. I I don't know who shot who. But if y'all could get together and talk through it, I I'd think it would solve a whole lot of problems.
Well, I really think he also needs to be communicating with um Verizon and their 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 folks too. Oh.
I don't care who's in the room, but somebody needs to talk to somebody. It's it's awful.
Well, I I wouldn't say it's awful, but um, you know, I I I think that this is an issue that needs to be resolved. Um. And I don't know how the board wants to, wants us to proceed on this, but um. Yeah, it it gets down to people want reliable cell phone service here and we work very, very hard. To get Verizon to put a lot of expensive equipment up there to improve um cell phone coverage. So um. I'd be happy to talk with Mr. Cooper. I'm sure Matt and I would be happy to talk with them. And I think that if we're gonna do that, we need to have the folks from Verizon to um, to also talk. I'm worried that Verizon is gonna get very frustrated if they can't, you know, get to their equipment. And and do the work that that they have to do. So.
I think it's contractors for Verizon, so.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk with anyone. It, we'll talk with any of the, bring any of those folks, their contractors, anybody into the process. But I think that it would be helpful for Mr. Cooper to sit down with us and the people that are trying to improve cell coverage here in this town.
Thank you.
What what would the board like for us to do?
Well, I don't think the contract was ever written in the town's uh benefit. It was very much Mr. Cooper's benefit. And I think we need to have the town attorney review it and get some remarks from um her town manager. Who is Mr. Josh Ward.
Well, after looking at the uh, the lease agreement, um, and realizing it went out in two thousand nineteen, Matt and I looked at that. And for several years now, since the town decided to add the addition to the tower, uh, there's been some confusion about. Um, where uh, Mr. Cooper's uh antenna could be. As if you remember, he wanted to be on top of the the tower once Verizon. Uh, located on the new addition, which was approved by the town. Verizon did build exactly where they were supposed to build. He wanted moved up to the top of the tower, uh, which the town paid for him to move. Uh, probably eight thousand dollars worth. And typically in these agreements, there is a specific sector in which each company. Is supposed to stay. And I think we, we need to be real uh careful to look at the, at the new lease agreement with WHLC. And make sure that they are leasing a specific sector. And if they are leasing any other area on that tower. That the board approves it and they uh are uh paying the appropriate lease. For each attachment because uh each sector uh is is required to pay. Uh, you know, is is a dollar figure. Just like Verizon has has paid X amount. WHLC needs to, needs to pay X amount, apples to apples for that sector. Plus any other attachments down below. On the tower, which I don't think has been uh, you know, the current situation for the past several years. So I think as we look at this lease agreement, we need to make sure uh we we have uh a a better agreement this time for the next ten years. With WHLC and Mr. Cooper.
It it seems like we have two, two issues that we need to address. One, of course, is creating a new lease agreement. If if you said, Josh. And then also, what about the current problem of of whether it be the vi- Verizon technicians? Or there's their contractors being able to have access to their equipment? To where they can make their improvements without getting fried from radio wa- radiation. Um.
Well, I I think, you know, everybody is gonna have to sit down. Obviously, Verizon's been trying to make these upgrades since July. Um, there have been um, some arguments between Mr. Cooper and and Verizon's contractors. And it's probably gonna take us at this point to get together in the same room and go over some dates and when they're gonna come here. Uh, to make these upgrades and make sure that the safety of that tower uh is correct before uh the climbers go up. And and I feel like that another concern I have is that. Again, as I stated before, that that we did pay, the town did pay Mr. Cooper to move. Uh, to the top of the tower. He's in a prime location. Um, and now he wants to move up uh from what one one hundred and ten feet as he is now to one eighteen. Which is gonna cost uh, you know, twenty-seven hundred dollars in engineering and. You know, Matt, forty-five hundred dollars potentially in construction fees and I. At this point, I don't think the town of Highlands should be responsible for paying for that. We have to, we have to install a lightning rod uh up there. Which we're gonna do. Matt has a a quote for doing that. But uh, it all hinges on where his antenna is. Uh, and and I think that uh at some point, if he wants to go higher on the the tower to a hundred and eighteen feet. Number one, the town board needs to approve it. It needs to be paying for potentially another sector. Uh, and and then we need to figure out where the lightning rod needs to be. So there's, there's a number of things that need to be figured out. And again, I want, I want clarification. From this point forward in this new agreement of where he is supposed to be on this tower. So where something happens, he's not asking us to move him up uh in the future.
Yeah, I'd like whatever the agreement is, is to put this thing to bed because I feel like we're every, I don't know, it's like every three months, some new issue would arises.
Well, one other thing that I'd also like to bring up is Mr. Cooper's payments, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month right now. And currently, he's behind on that. Uh, he owes the town four thousand dollars. About forty-seven hundred dollars uh for the monthly payments for the antenna. So I I think we do need to look at these items. We really wanted to make sure that we are legally correct as we sat down uh with Mr. Cooper and Verizon to make sure that. What we ask to be done. Uh, that we have the full backing of the board and that we are legally correct in in doing so. That's, that's more the purpose of this tonight is to uh, we do want to sit down with Mr. Cooper and. And so we've had some, some back and forth and and we backed it as uh, kind of the the man in the middle. Uh, hearing from each side is uh, as Verizon's contacted Mr. Cooper and back and forth. And then they had some, some arguments up at the tower site and some other things, but we would like to bring everybody to the table. We just want to make sure that before we do so, that that we have the full backing of the board and also of our attorney in in those discussions.
Okay, um, I've I've got another question. Uh, is Verizon paying what, fifteen hundred a month for our location on our tower?
They pay twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred? Okay.
They had added a, a microwave back hall and and that price was increased. Uh, that was uh, not the initial meeting. Uh, but that was in a separate board meeting when the 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 price had went up.
And I have one more question for you, Matt, because I remember when we added to that tower, some of the residents were concerned. That eventually we'd, it'd be so high, we'd have to put a flashing red light on top with our lightning rod. Or we're coming anywhere close to having to put a um, a warning light on top of it.
No, sir, they, the tower had to be two hundred feet tall.
Okay. Um, what is the pleasure of the board on this? How how we we should proceed? It seems to me like we need to have, direct our town attorney to. Develop a lease and also um possibly Matt. develop a lease and also, um, possibly Matt, the town manager and myself meet with, um, the stakeholders who are involved on the operation of this, um, tower.
I, I think, yeah, I think that we, I think that we need, this is our tower. This is the Town of Highlands Tower. I think we need to take control of it. It's done our way. If that means that we get everybody in the room and we tell them exactly what is going to happen and when, and that's what we tell them. If they don't want to do it that way, then we don't have to give them another lease on, on the tower. At, at this stage, if he's in arrears and he had, doesn't have a lease anyway, whichever one it is, I think we are the authority on the tower. And so we're the ones that should be able to say how it's done and when.
I agree wholeheartedly. Agreed.
Agreed. And before we, uh, pay the attorney to look or start a new contract, he needs to bring his payments up to date.
The only thing I heard was that they might have to do the work at night to lower the power to make it safe to climb the tower. And that would bro- involve bringing in lots of, uh, light. So y'all will figure that out.
Take into the town manager.
Um, let's just, let's leave it at this. The town manager, Matt and I will talk with, um, Mr. Cooper and the people needing the work to be done. And, um, we'll discuss Commissioner Callaway, the issue of, um, bringing payments up to date, certainly in a timely manner. Um, in the meantime, does the board, is it your pleasure that, um, our town attorney start re- reviewing the current lease or the expired lease and developing a draft for a new lease?
Agreed.
Absolutely.
All right. Why don't we leave that one and we will, we will be meeting with everyone, including Mr. Cooper. All right. The next item would be the new full-time lifeguard position and increase for part-time. Um, Lester Norris, Les, I know you've been hanging in here. So would you please take the floor?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. The Highlands Recreation Pool has been struggling like most others in the industry to get and retain lifeguards. The last two years, we've had to go out and recruit part-time lifeguards. Where in the past, high school students have come to us looking for part-time work as lifeguard. Again, over the last couple of years, we have struggled to get and keep guards to maintain our pool schedule. The pool lost four lifeguards since the first of August to other jobs that was reportedly paying $15 an hour. Then just this week, we had two more guards leave. This leaves us with Tyler, the pool manager who works Monday through Friday, 5:30 AM to 1:30, and three part-time lifeguards, one of which can only work Saturday, one who can only work Tuesday and Wednesday evenings and Sunday. And by the way, we got a notice from him today. Uh, he is leaving as of next Wednesday. He's gotten accepted into pilot school. So now, and only one who normally can only work one day a weekend. So as of today, we no longer have adequate staff to open for public swim, which requires lifeguards. Uh, the Recreation Committee met on Monday, September the 27th and discussed the following. Hiring a full-time lifeguard, thus giving the pool a staff person with a year-round set schedule, providing more adult supervision rather than teenagers supervising other teenagers. Then raising part-time lifeguard pay to $15 an hour in order to attract and retain staff to maintain the pool schedule. Along with discussing raising ice rink staff to $15 an hour, so to attract and retain staff. The Rec Committee recommended that we hire a full-time lifeguard, starting at $15 an hour with benefits, and raise part-time lifeguards and ice rink staff to $15 an hour in an effort to attract and retain adequate staff to operate these facilities. Following this breakdown is a breakdown from Emily in HR, what this would cost annually. And you have that in your package, uh, one for the pool and also one for the ice rink.
Lester, can I just ask you how, what are the hours for public swim?
Oh, during the winter hours is 3:30 in the afternoon till seven, Monday through Thursday. Saturdays is 11 AM till 6 PM and Sunday is one to six PM. And then in the summer, of course, we go back to where we're open all day long from 11 till seven, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Friday, and then the same Saturday, 11 to six, and Sunday, one to six.
I, I guess my question is, is how much is, I, I try and read your, your chart on the attendance, but I can't, I can't really tell how much it's being used.
Not a lot, but, but some use. I don't know. I don't have all those numbers right here in front of me, uh, to pull it up or to look at it. But we get some use, not a whole lot of use there in the, the winter especially, but now in the summer, of course, we do.
That's, that's what I realized, but that's what I'm trying to figure out if, is, is if it worth us paying somebody $15 an hour to sit there and essentially do nothing?
Yeah. And that's why we're bringing it to the board to, uh, you know, I, I don't know the true answer to that. I mean, it's a public pool, uh, you know, we want to use it as much as we can. Other than staffing, it costs no more. It's heated, it's chemicals, everything's controlled. So, uh, but again, that will have to be a, a decision that the board makes.
Lester, I have a question. How long have you been having the problem where you have to close it down to public sw- swim? Has that been a recor- recurring problem for months or is that's a new development?
Just since the first of August, when these guards started leaving us.
Okay. That, has that impacted, you think, the, um, patronage of, of coming to public swim? Because they don't know when it's going to be open, when it's going to be closed?
Certainly it has. And we've actually started putting in our recreation for, reporting the news, telling everybody, call the pool to make sure. Because the last five weeks, I think we've only been open for public swim two days a week. Because that's the only days we had staff to work them on.
You still have, you still have lap swi- you still have lap swim and, um, different parties and, um, classes, correct?
Yes, yes. But most of that Tyler takes on, uh, the pool director. But now we do have people that come in, you know, from 3:30, uh, to seven and do, you know, just adult swim or lap swim that we could actually get by if we had a guard without fully staffing. But if you have more, if you're opening it up to, uh, kids under 18, you have to have lifeguards.
Well, Lester, in the, in the meantime, can we not, right, right now, there's the adult lap swim, you said is in the morning, correct?
Correct.
And it's not, it's not, there's no lifeguard then, correct?
Just Tyler.
Okay. So Tyler is there?
Yeah. And basically that's somebody at the front door that clicks in to let them in, uh, through the dressing rooms to the pool to make sure you have no kids or anything swim in there. And then once they come out on the deck, we have two signs out there that says, uh, no lifeguard on duty, which is a requirement.
I don't know. I, to me, it sounds like something we need, I think. I just hate to have that beautiful facility and then not have it available. Because of, I mean, this is just the times we're living in, I'm afraid. I think this is just the cost of doing business nowadays.
I agree.
So I, I guess I, my, my direction is I'd like to see you advertise it and just see what kind of interest you get.
The, um, recommendation from the, uh, Recreation Committee.
Okay. The request is for a full-time lifeguard and then increase the part-time pay, including the skating rink personnel. Lester, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson, who's raised her concerns about the necessity.
I, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if there's more than one answer to this, this problem here. If we can consolidate or do other things, um, I'm not saying that we don't need to, to pay a good wage. And I'm not saying we need to close the pool, but that pool is a money suck right now. I mean, it just is. Um, and I don't, you know, for the, for the, the, the cost benefit ratio here is, is getting pretty skewed.
I agree.
So what's the, what's the action of the, the, the board would like to take?
Well, I would like to say if, Lester, is there any other, uh, scheduling, um, options that you have? Um, you know, for, for the four people who show up for public swim or the two people or the six people or the five people?
I'm not sure I'm understanding. The only thing I can think of, I mean, that we could cut that back is if you did public swims a certain days and not do it, not open it up, you know, four days a week. Uh, the weekends you can be busy. And it's a pool. You never know, and you never know who's in town. But, you know, you could, you could cut it back and like what we're, what we've been doing now since we've lost most of these guards where we're only open, opening public swim two days a week and not open it the other two days a week. Uh, cause even if we went with the, the option of hiring the other full-time guard, the pool could still be opened in during those hours for adult swim or any classes or anything we might could put on. You've got that one person there that could do it as long as they're over 18. But if they're under, then you have to have the guards on. So that would be a little cost savings. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how much that would be, but.
Could we do more, could we do more adult swim, swim time in, in the meantime then?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we put that, if we hired that new full-time guard, yeah, you could, you would add several options, but I don't know how much that's going to be used, you know, 3:30 to 5:00. Uh, sometimes now we'll get three or four. Sometimes we may not have, you know, one show up.
I mean, to me, any, to me anyway, it would be, uh, you know, people show up and they were closed because we don't have a, have a lifeguard. If you, if we had specific days, but not every day that you could show up, then they could make their own schedule to be sure that the pool is open. I don't know that people just need to come and soak in the pool every day.
Right.
Just trying to figure out how, without just throwing more money at it, we actually make it more efficient.
No, and I understand that. And, and I think as I've already said, for now, public swim, we can't even open up on a Saturday or Sunday now, public swim. Cause we don't even have but one guard that can work any of those days until, you know, we get more staffing on. And we've advertised in the paper, I think we've been in there six weeks. Uh, we call Raven County Pool, Franklin Pool and Cashers, you know, because those are seasonal pool to see if they had any staff that had worked for them that would like, you know, part-time work, weekends. Clayton or Franklin, you couldn't hardly drive up here on a, you know, a Tuesday or Wednesday or something for four hours. But we have had absolutely no luck. And I don't know if it's off.
So you're talking about, sorry. So you're talking about, uh, the pool manager could act as a lifeguard for, for the adult swim? And ain't that what you're saying? Is the, and he manager for that. And you want one more full-time lifeguard at $15 an hour. Okay. And then I, I would probably try and see if we couldn't do it with just those two people as opposed to having a lot of part-timers that, that come and go. Those are the ones that are, we're having trouble keeping.
Correct. Well, that may work until the summer.
Oh, I agree with that. But there's no reason in the wintertime when we're getting two and four people, you know.
I agree with that.
Agreed.
Okay.
The only thing that would not allow any swimming for anyone under 18, because Tyler comes in at 5:30 in the morning and has the pool open at six and works till 1:30. That's his shift. Even if you had two guards at that time, you're not going to get kids and stuff because they're going to come in during the wintertime because they're in school or, or wherever parents are working.
Well, so the, the, the pool manager and the full-time lifeguard would, would work at the same time?
No, 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 I'm sorry. But what I'm saying is if the, if the second guard, the new position came in, say at 12 o'clock, they would overlap with the pool manager, but stay till eight o'clock. At no time in there, except for the time when both those guards or, or both those, uh, yeah, staff members was there, you could let kids in under the age of 18. Cause when Tyler leaves at 1:30, the new guard or the other new position would be on until, say, say eight o'clock. But you still, uh, allow kids to swim without another lifeguard with you.
So, so you're saying there actually has to be two lifeguards for people under 18 to swim?
Yes, of one on the water and, and they're only allowed 25-minute shifts without, or is the Red Cross recommendation?
So Lester, to that, to that point though, and this is where I guess I'm confused then. Can the, you say when it, for adult swim, there's, there's no lifeguard on duty, but there's one person that lets people in. But now is he, does, do we have to have a lifeguard there or can we have no lifeguards during adult swim?
You're actually, you don't have to have a lifeguard because you've got a sign there saying there's no lifeguard on duty.
Well, then could not, is there anybody else at the rec park that could open it up in the morning for adult swim? And then that would get the person that instead of working till 1:30, they could work later and cover the shift of, if there's kids, I don't know if kids come after school or not. I could look back on.
That's the only time right now, dad and weekends, that you would have kids.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But if you push his schedule back so he's not coming in early and have somebody else cover the opening of the pool in the morning, so.
Yeah, we, I don't know that we have anybody, I mean, we're pretty strict with staff anyway, that could come in and open up.
I mean, could the police not open up the door or anything? Or do you need somebody there?
Oh, you've got to have somebody sitting there watching that front gate, clicking people in, saying, making sure no kid sneaks in there. Cause.
Oh, yeah.
Kids sneak there.
I got you.
Done.
And you, and you couldn't make some sort of, uh, card security that you issued and that was it? To get them in the building?
Whenever, wh- when we first started talking about this enclosed pool and stuff and went to the insurance committee, they would not insure if there was not someone on the property.
Makes sense.
I got you. So now the, we, I don't know, kind of talking in circles, it sounds like it's a necessity then, if we're going to be open.
Yep.
So we're talking about one full-time, one part-time? Lester?
Well, it'd depend on if we could get a part-time and back on and see, you know, work out a schedule.
But it would be.
It would be.
For the purpose of the budget, we're talking about a full-time, part-time.
Excuse me, Mayor?
For the purpose of this budget action that we'd have to take, we're talking about a full-time and a part-time person.
Yes.
And then all the people that work at the ice rink, moving their pay up to $15 an hour?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That would be the motion if anyone wanted to make it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Does that capture it for you, Lester?
Yes.
So, let me make sure. The numbers I have here is an, an extra just under $48,000 for the pool. And $6,600 for the, um, um.
Ice rink, yes.
Ice rink, right, right. Couldn't think of that. Um, and so you're, you're asking us to approve that as a budget amendment or?
Well, now that, that's a total, that's what, we wanted you to know what it would cost each year. Cause if you do this now, you're going to carry it over from year to year. It would not cost on the, the pool, but half of that, because we'd basically got only half of the year left. The ice rink would be the full amount because we've not, uh, opened the ice rink for the year.
We could revisit this in our budget deliberations for the coming year. Okay.
Yeah. So basically the pool would cost us about 24,000 to get through the remainder of the year. And the ice rink, the 6,000 some odd.
What I will, what I will add is.
Yeah, what I will, what I will add is if you decide to do this now, we can get through this year. And what we need to do is what Lester's been wanting to do past couple of years is looking at uh the fees uh for the rec park is uh, you know, we're low in some areas. And so I think uh Lester's been looking at at an increase for a few years. I think we need to look at that in this next budget year and make those increases to help us out. Uh, you know, with the increased fees uh with the pool and the ice rink.
And and I would say with the ice rink, we're very generous with the um the operation and the fees.
But yet, if we have another good year like we did last year, we would have still made money on the ice rink.
Yeah, the ice rink pays for itself. It's the pool that sucks the money from us.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I guess I don't know if I can't remember if somebody made a motion, but it was to to hire a full-time lifeguard and fifteen dollars at fifteen dollars an hour and fifteen dollars an hour for part-time lifeguard. And I guess sometime after the first of the year, y'all will come with a budget amendment so that we can do that. Is that correct?
Yes, I'll come back with it because I don't think it's going to be that full forty-seven thousand either, Amy.
Okay. And and who made that motion? Did Brian, did you make?
Brian made the motion.
And Donny, you. Okay, and Amy, you 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 clarified it.
She did.
I hope. I'm ready to one way or the other.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the new lifeguard. Uh, let me go ahead and and call for the vote. Commissioner Patterson, your vote. Okay, Commissioner Steeler, your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hane, your vote.
Aye.
And Commissioner Callaway. Thank you. Uh, and we'll we'll monitor that um personnel matter as it goes goes forth. All right, item fourteen, request for reasonable accommodation, printing of documents. And Commissioner Hane, you'd requested this to be put on the agenda. Let me let me just say the um some background and and Josh and them can give backgrounds. We have moved since about a decade to a um a printed printerless, you know, format. And I'll leave it at that and turn it over to a discussion. Commissioner Hane, Commissioner or um Josh or anyone who'd like to weigh in on this.
Jay, help me out here. Will you explain reasonable accommodation to them?
Oh, I know what reasonable accommodation is, but I'm sure Jake can do that. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I know you know, I was just Josh put it on the agenda. I just wanted to talk about reasonable accommodation. And Mr. Mayor, I asked you for reasonable accommodation. You gave it to me and then mysteriously, here we are this time.
Yeah, I think I would I would just say this, Commissioner Hane, reasonable accommodation might have other dimensions other than just printing, but we'll we'll have this conversation. Jake, would you like to explain?
Um, I'll try. I mean, I wasn't prepared to uh talk about this, but hold on a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's nine o'clock. Let's just put it on next month's agenda and let Jake be prepared. And then he can give a synopsis of reasonable accommodation.
If everybody's in agreement, we'll do that because it is getting late and I know we've got some people waiting to to weigh in on the next item. If that's okay with everyone, we'll move on to item number fifteen. And that is the mask requirement update. Let me do the introduction. I've asked Chief Holland to be on standby and Tom Neal, I talked to him this afternoon, he said he'll be on standby. I warned Tom that it was going to be late in the evening because of the agenda. I hope Tom's still there. But here's some of the things that we need to be talking about. And if you remember when we passed the mask requirement and we had the experts like Tom Neal and others come in and warn Kate, we had a high positivity rate, which was up to eighteen percent in Macon County. We're a hotspot. The good news, it has been going down in recent days. And I checked today, I think with Tom, and it was or Josh did, it was at ten point three three. And it's going down. Um, the reason I wanted to bring this up is we've got the Halloween event that will be coming. And people I know Kay McKinnon might be on the line too. They were asking what would be the guidance for that with children and 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 adults, because that's going to be a big event. The idea of town facilities inside um inside businesses. And also, you know, we've been having these Zoom meetings. Is it time for us to go back to in-person meetings? So those are kind of the the points to this, I think. So let me just go ahead. Is Tom Neal on with us? Tom, you are, aren't you?
I'm here, mayor.
Thank you for your patience.
No worries.
What is your analyst, your perspective at this point?
Well, I'm going to, of course, default to what I think's the safest thing for the community. Uh, the CDC is still the, you know, the overruling guidance we follow. And at the current rate of ten point, it's actually ten point five six percent is today over the last seven days. We're still above the positivity rate that they that would classify it as high. Once we drop below ten percent, it is considered moderate. So you would go from uh mandating a mask for everybody indoors to essentially only requiring unvaccinated to be masked indoors. Uh, now, I will, you know, let you know, as I shared, this is for all of Macon County. The CDC does not break it down to, you know, the town level. Uh, so what I I shared with the mayor was, you know, watching what's going on with hospital admissions. Uh, you know, the patients that are positive that are requiring treatments. Uh, we are seeing a significant decline at the hospital. Uh, looking at our region, the mountain area, uh, region, which the state of North Carolina does break down. Different regions around the state. I went back and looked at a peak. We were around two hundred and fifty-six patients in the hospital with COVID per day. Uh, we are down to about a hundred and fifty per day for all of our area. So, you know, when you look at it, you know, you definitely see a trend down with the positive cases that are being reported, the positivity rate of the number of cases that are being tested that are converting to positive and the hospital admissions. Uh, when the town did vote, they did, you know, put the mask in place to follow that once it dropped below ten percent, that the mask mandate would go away. I, you know, I kind of hope that we would be below that at this point, but we're, you know, we're going down, but it's just not below ten percent at this point. So that's my assessment. You know, I again, I would go back to the CDC does have this guidance to help control the spread. I do appreciate why people don't wear to want to wear masks, but, you know, it does allow businesses to stay open, allows us to stay safe and to avoid seeing a rise in cases again. But I do appreciate the the pressure of the community. I've heard from people in the community that just want to go back to normal, so to speak. So uh, I I don't know if there's any questions for me, but that's really kind of my feeling on the matter.
Okay, anybody have a question of Tom?
I, uh, Tom, as you as you're, we're doing the testing at the at the community uh building there. Did that not give us a better idea of what is actually within our community, the positivity rate, or is that all so anonymous that it's all aggregated?
It's aggregated into the county level. It does help us, though, because, you know, there are, you know, obviously, when you're looking at a percent, if you're testing fewer cases, it's more likely that a patient, a person that would go to the health department is more likely to be sick. So, you know, you're we're doing about thirty per day is what they're they're telling me. And, you know, at this point, I was looking, we're only seeing about one to two positive cases per day that are coming out, and that and that's at at the county level. Uh, you know, we were seeing as many as fifty positive a day when you were going back uh to, you know, middle of September and August, when we're really seeing a high number of cases. So um it does help, though, but it is not drilled down to our level, and they won't disclose that either, obviously, for, you know, privacy purposes.
Oh, and Tom, let me add one other thing. I I remember when you you and everyone presented to the board when we were making this decision, we were looking at like in the counties, six hundred and something active cases. Now it's down into the two digits, I think, like, I I can't remember, was it sixty-four or something active cases? So we've really seen a a drop in active cases in the county also.
That that's correct.
Okay. And I will, I asked Chief Holland to to stay on. I'll I'll tell you what my observation was, although, and I'm sure maybe if you have gotten this feedback, some people called me up and said, don't dare remove this mask requirement. Someone just passed away and I I understand that. And then I get other calls of people saying, uh, why are you continuing with this? And then I had one person coming in for a a visit at one of our distinguished resort facilities and were demanding that uh rescind the mask requirement or they wouldn't show up and it was going to collapse the whole economy of Highlands or something crazy like that. So there's a lot of controversy. But Chief Holland, tell us what your feeling is about the participation of people on the street and the ability to enforce this mask requirement.
So um I have, I've also had a few phone calls from uh I guess full-time, part-time residents that are concerned that uh they're seeing people on the streets that are not wearing masks. I myself have seen more uh a very low percentage of people wearing masks um on the on the sidewalks. Problem with us when we mandated uh the mask requirements, didn't put a um for lack of better words, a fine or a consequence to that if if they weren't, so we could not really enforce it. Uh, yeah, we can, we, you know, in the beginning, we went through and we wanted we wanted to uh wear the masks. But that quit working as well because nobody was wearing it except the.
Go please. Okay.
So that's been our struggle. Um, we we don't have anything to enforce.
What's the feeling of the board on this issue?
I agree with the chief. Uh, I in my travels around uh town and seeing people on Main Street, even the business, some of the businesses in town uh have signs in their windows saying uh m- mask recommended and stuff like that, which is if we're going to mandate it, that's certainly counterproductive to a mandate. It's it's like the chief says, it's essentially unenforceable. Um, and and we've got a lot of people that are not wearing masks. Um, I think if you need to wear a mask, you feel uncomfortable uh being out in public without a mask, then by all means, put a mask on. Uh, at this point, I'd be for removing the mandate and uh, and I don't even know that saying mask recommended means a hill of beans. If if you feel like you want one, wear one.
I guess I agree with Buzz do it to the point, especially outside, I guess. Like, I I'd hate for us to go to Halloween expecting everybody to have masks on and then trying to.
They will have masks, not the right.
Not that kind of mask, but yeah.
And certainly for Halloween, it just doesn't even make sense to to have any kind of of mandate during Halloween. Unless we're all going to go around as as surgical assistants or something.
Well, I'll I'll say that now that we are down, we're still in the high, but we're down, we've started coming down. I think it it becomes um um personal behavior. And since we we have a hard time mandating personal behavior, um, anybody who wants to wear a mask and any business who wants to require people who come in to have a mask and do that on their own, um, it's gotten to the point where when it's high and it's you know, we're talking about hundreds going in to the hospital, and that's one thing, and people hear about that. But now that everybody hears it's coming down, nobody's going to do it anyway if they don't want to do it. But I require a mask in my business, and that's the way anybody else can do the exact same thing.
Uh, Mayor Council, if I could say one thing, um, sure. The CDC guidance did not call for mask mandates outdoors. It only does call for mask in public indoor settings. And I remember the discussion, you know, we did talk about the large crowds and that, you know, it was really very difficult to socially distance in that. And I'm not, I'm only bringing that up because there is not CDC guidance about outdoor wearing a mask.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we rescind our mandatory mask mandate in the commercial business on the sidewalks and in the businesses.
Second, second, would that also include town facilities or or not?
Yes.
I think yes. I think that if Josh feels like it's necessary for everybody in his office to wear a mask, he has the, I think he has the authority to be able to do that without us having to tell him yes or no. He he's smart enough to figure out what's best for his people.
Okay. Do we have any other further discussion? Commissioner Hane, any comment? Here he goes.
I saw two merchants last night. They uh they didn't understand that the emergency room was overwhelmed at one time, but when I explained that, they uh they understood.
Yeah. Okay, we have the motion on the floor. Uh, uh, and and, you know, I share your concern. I hope that people will exercise personal behavior, responsibility, and certainly, if you feel like you need to wear a mask, by all means, it should be done. I know some of the merchants have really cooperated, and I will tell you, a couple of them where they required their employees to wear a mask, they lost employees at a very difficult time, and I appreciate their their, you know, willingness to to follow the the guidelines, but other merchants have not. You know, I think it is an unenforceable um issue at this point. So we've got a a motion on the floor to rescind the mask requirement in the business areas. Let me go ahead and take the vote.
Did we get a second? Did we get a second?
Do we get a second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, second. So Commissioner Patterson, you say, yeah, okay. Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
Commissioner Steeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Callaway?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hane?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So we will um rescind the requirement. And Chief, could you have your patrol officers um make the corrections on the signs, remove the signage?
Remove, okay, got it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mayor, can I just say, I do really appreciate the town's support during a very challenging time that we went through.
I appreciate that, Tom, and I appreciate your leadership in getting the testing sites done and and addressing the booster um program that will be coming forward. So we appreciate all the things that you've done too. So thank you very much, and thank you for staying with us so late. All right, we're at the end of the um agenda, and that means we need a motion to adjourn. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, thank you very much. It's been a long night, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.